Welcome to Perspectives Online and on Air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Blanigan. This program was pre-recorded on Tuesday, June 29th, and we are using the Zoom platform to connect with our guests, and the program will appear on both WFSU FM and the WFSU Public Media Facebook page on Thursday, July 2nd. Program, this one being our second in the series of political perspectives in advance of the August 18th primary election in Leon County, and still to come, we'll have the contest for two Tallahassee City Commission seats, the Office of Public Defender in the Second Judicial Circuit, and I think we also have a school board race that we're gonna throw in there into the mix. Today's program focuses on the largest slate of candidates that Leon County voters will be seeing on the primary ballot. The office is for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at Large, Seat 1, and for the past several years, that seat has been occupied by Mary Ann Lindley. She decided not to seek another term, and so that created an open seat and a lot of candidate interest ensued. There are six candidates on the primary ballot, and all of them have graciously agreed to be on the program today. We can't thank them enough. We'll give each of them an opportunity to introduce themselves and talk for a few minutes about their background and what they consider their unique qualifications for the office. And unlike formal debates, we don't impose strict time limits, but we do ask everyone to kind of keep the remarks as pithy and brief as possible, so we can cover more ground in the course of the discussion, which will then go on to specific issues that are facing Leon County. We held a random name drawing right before the show to get an order of presentation, so it would be on the up and up and nice and equal and all. And the winner of the drawing was Robin Coulson, and you get an opportunity to start, Robin. Tell us about yourself and what you bring to the table as far as this county commission seat goes.
So much, and thanks for giving us all this opportunity. I've lived in Leon County for over 30 years, and so it is my adopted home, and over the years, it has been just a wonderful, wonderful place for me to live and go to school and raise my children, but it's become apparent to me that it's not that way for everyone. And so I would really, really like to focus on those, the issues of disparities. There are several issues that, of course, are important to us as Tallahasseans, the environment and maintaining our way of life, but for me, the disparities are the big issue. And I think I can, I think I can bring my skills from my professional life into helping to facilitate the conversations that have to happen, bringing the players to the table. I have a background in training, performance management, performance improvement, quality assurance, and so those are all really collaborative processes, and I think that's what it's gonna take. There was a great forum last night hosted by Tallahassee Forum Collective Impact, and that was really the point of the conversation, that to fix our challenges and our problems and that lie before us, it really takes a lot of players to come to the table and really begin to define the problems and identify the solutions together, and that's really what I've done my whole life. And so I think I can bring that skill set to the county commission seat, and just my experience as a citizen in the city and seeing some of the differences that we have before us and how the city has changed in the last 30 to 35 years.
Thank you, Robin Coulson. Next up, Danielle Irwin, please, a little bit about yourself and what you bring to the table.
Great, thank you, Tom. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm a scientist and an environmental consultant with 20 years of environmental management experience in the state of Florida, and I bring all of that to the table with me. That experience has been both in the private sector as an environmental consultant for engineering firms, as well as my own firm that I ran and operated for seven years before selling it to move back to Tallahassee. I also have had extensive experience with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, both at staff level and as leadership level, overseeing statewide programs for the Division of Water Resource Management. I consider myself a bootstraps girl. I've had my fair share of hardships over the years and the support of community and the support of various loved ones and programs and mentors have helped me achieve the type of success that I hope for everyone in Leon County. I too have been driven by the disparities that I see around the county in terms of choosing to run in this particular race. Economic disparities, in my opinion, can be improved in Leon County by taking a three-pronged approach. The first of that would be growth management, making sure that we're recognizing not just the needs of new development, but the needs of our existing communities, and making sure that those are being adequately prioritized, but also balancing those development pressures with environmental management. The way we manage our infrastructure, both new and existing in terms of maintenance and improvement, we need to do that through the lens of racial equity. In addition, when we're balancing development environmental pressures in Leon County, that really manifests in our water quality concerns. Many of our lakes are polluted and have pollution limits that the local government is trying hard to work to reduce in terms of nitrogen and phosphorus. This also relates to our stormwater management practices as well. So the way we handle this is different in new areas of town versus existing areas of town, and I really want to make sure that Tallahassee is a great place to live for everyone. Secondly, community health and wellness. I think that we're gonna have a tough time having a healthy community if we don't address our food security issue. We're the third most food insecure county in the state of Florida, and achieving food security means addressing the needs of all people, including children and elders and the disabled. You know, if we have malnutrition for our children, they are less likely to be able to succeed in school and therefore in life. For adults, malnutrition challenges their ability to succeed in their work, and for elders, it compromises their health. So we need to do better at bolstering programs to achieve greater community health. Community health and access to food relates to availability as well as affordability, and therefore we need greater financial health. So I propose the third prong of the approach would be strengthening our local economy by tackling workforce training and job opportunities, not just for people with college, but for those that are not college educated as well, and addressing our small businesses, particularly African-American-owned and women-owned small businesses, removing obstacles to opportunity for them, and nourishing and promoting the entrepreneurial aspects of making sure that we have businesses that are owned by African-Americans and owned by women that are being utilized. They're being dramatically underutilized here in Leon County today. So all of those things combined will help lift up everyone within the county and address our economic disparity within Leon County, and I think I'm the right person for the job to get us there.
Thank you, Danielle Irwin. We now have a opening salvo from Scott Flowers. Scott, it's all yours.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for having me on the forum as well. I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate all the other candidates. We have a terrific group of candidates in this race, and I know everybody that I've talked to along the way as far as endorsements and donations, contributions, all of those things. I'm thrilled that there is such a good collection of candidates for this race, and it looks good for our county and it's gonna be good for our county, so I want to commend everybody on that, first of all, and Tom, for what you do for us to get the word out there. My name is Scott Flowers. I chose to run for this position whenever I learned Mary Ann Lindley was stepping down. Worked in state government for about 10 years, and outside of that, before, during, and after, I've been a business coach and an entrepreneur, owned many different types of businesses. But working in the state government really kind of, you know, opened my eyes to what public servants can do and to what government regulation can do. I got to see it from both sides, as an entrepreneur and also as a government regulator, and really see the impact the government makes on the community. A few years ago, I started working with some nonprofit organizations, just volunteering time, getting my kids out there, you know, feeding people, and through that, I was able to meet some terrific people who are doing a lot of good work out in our community, and I started to notice this, I think everyone so far has mentioned disparity. There's also a disparity between the work that gets done and what government recognizes as the needs. There's an information gap, and there's a work gap, and there's a resource gap, and I started to see that we need somebody in these roles that can connect those, that can connect the boots on the ground to the resources in government. So I want to say before, I don't really have a stump speech, and I won't talk for very long, but I want to say that as a voter, over the years, the most important thing to me in any candidate that I supported, I've never believed in party politics, I've never been strong in one party or another party, what's always mattered to me is integrity, accountability, transparency, and I think that's really what the public is craving on a local, state, and national level. I think we need politicians who will speak out and make tough decisions even when they're unpopular. Recent example of that is the mask mandate here in Leon County. On a personal level, I don't like it. I would never have voted for it if it was only me that mattered, but as a commissioner, I would certainly have voted for it because our community needed it, and we need community leadership that's gonna do that type of thing, make uncomfortable decisions, do things that are the best for the community, not for themselves, and be accountable for it afterwards, and explain why they made the decision they would have made. I did that recently on a Facebook post because I talked with Christian Dozier, you know, I talked with some other people about why we needed to do the mask mandate, and a lot of my conservative friends weren't fans of that, and so I wanted to be out there and let them know, here's why we need it, this is what we've got to do, and as a commissioner, that's exactly what I will continue to do. I want to be accountable, I want to be transparent. And then I think Robin mentioned the facilitation between, you know, the team building, and that's really what we need. Right now, we've got a city commission and a county commission that don't always communicate with each other. We've got a CRA that doesn't always follow the recommendations of the citizens advisory councils. We've got sheriff's office, and we've got a police chief that don't always, they're not always on the same page with our city and our county commissions, and they're looking back and forth to each other for support, and we need that. We need everybody at the table. We need our nonprofit communities at the table, we need the boots that are on the ground out working in these communities, the community organizers, we need them at the table, we need both of our law enforcement agencies at the table, we need a unified vision and a unified effort to accomplish the things that everybody, I think all of our candidates here are going to agree that the income disparity is a problem, health services are a problem. I think we need to redefine what community development is. It isn't restaurants and bars, it isn't $150,000 condos for students, that's not community development, not the development that our community needs. We need real affordable housing, we need real jobs that pay more than minimum wage, we need some real investment in the community, especially on the South Side and the West Side. So, you know, I think that most of our candidates here are gonna agree with those as our key issues, and I just wanted to mention that accountability, transparency, and integrity are what really make the difference, as well as getting all of those players to the table so that we have the right information in the right hands.
Thank you so much, Scott. Carolyn Cummings, you're up next here on the forum.
Yes, good afternoon, and I certainly appreciate this opportunity to be on this panel today, an opportunity you have given me to talk a little about my background. I am an attorney by profession and by trade. I have humble beginnings. I actually grew up in segregated Mississippi. I attended college in Mississippi, but I ventured to Florida for law school, and for some good reason, I've been here ever since. I attended the University of Florida Law School. At the law school, I moved to Tallahassee and worked in public service. I've worked for the state of Florida. I've litigated multimillion-dollar cases on behalf of the citizens of the state of Florida. I have represented thousands of individuals in my private practice, which I have been an attorney now for over 36 years, and all of my practice has been here in the Big Ben area. So I have represented thousands of clients in various judicial settings, quasi-judicial settings, administrative bodies, and I bring that expertise to the table. I've worked in the public sector for about half of my legal career. I've worked with agencies that represent the least of these, intelligent clients, and I've represented those clients in all types of situations, ranging from landlord tenant, ranging from mortgage foreclosures, ranging from child support issues, domestic violence issues, stalking issues, just the entire gamut of legal issues you can imagine, including some criminal matters. My practice has not dealt a lot with criminal law, but I have represented quite a few clients in the criminal law arena, so I bring that expertise to the table as well. I've advocated for thousands here in Leon County, and I would like to bring that experience, that knowledge, to represent the entire citizenry of Leon County. I've lived here, I've raised my son here, he graduated from the public schools of Leon County, and this has always just been a great, fascinating place to live, to the point where after I had lived here a couple of months, when my dad passed, I encouraged my mother to move here, and she has been a citizen of Leon County for over 25 years, a voting resident. She's 95 now, so that tells you she moved here. I also encourage my sister, who had three small children and her husband, to move here, and now her children are in their 30s, so that lets you know how long they've been here. So I not only talk about the great things in Leon County, the great potential for Leon County, I've advocated and I've encouraged others. I have friends whose names I won't mention that I've encouraged to move here, and they are here, good contributing citizens as well. I see a myriad of issues facing Leon County. Primary among those is healthcare disparities in a nation and in a county and a state as rich as ours, we should not have any neglect as far as our citizens are concerned. And of course, I'm concerned with the children. Healthcare disparities as it relates to affordable healthcare, available healthcare for our children. I think it's no question that there's disparities in income, disparities depending on what section of town you live on, and I certainly would like to address those. And I don't want to talk too long, but I'm deeply concerned as well about affordable housing. I'm concerned about veterans who gave, you know, their service to our country, and they're on the streets. I purchased property in the Frenchtown area. My law office is in the Frenchtown area as part of the revitalization of the Frenchtown area, and it's sad that I have individuals that walk up and down the street who've told me they have been in the military, but they don't have any place to live. So in addition to being concerned about affordable housing for our veterans, and I have a special affinity for veterans because my dad was a veteran, and his two brothers were veterans drafted during World War II. But at any rate, affordable housing for our low-income individuals, we have to be concerned about the least of these. I'm concerned, of course, about economic prosperity for all segments of the population. We are concerned about the middle class, remaining middle class, and not falling in a lower socioeconomic section. So I want to be the advocate, not just for an individual client, I want to be the advocate for the entire citizenship of Leon County, and I certainly hope I have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carolyn. Appreciate that. Next up, Jeff Hendry, sir, a little bit about yourself and what you bring to the job should the voters concur with your candidacy here.
Well, thank you, Tom, for allowing me to be here. My main thing I want to bring to everybody's attention is really a combination of my personal life and my professional career and how I think it lends itself to being on the county commission. I'm a lifelong resident of Tallahassee for 57 years. I attended a public school system here at St. Willem-Palm Elementary School, Astoria Park Elementary School, Bellevue Middle School, and Gobby High School. Many of those names ring true to many people that lived here as those are entitled one areas. Now Bellevue's actually even closed due to a number of changing demographic and socioeconomic conditions, and so that's very, very important to me. Another part of my personal life that really is important to me and what grounds my work ethic, as well as my, as well as my character, I think, were my mom and dad. My dad was an electrician, worked as an electrician for over 50 years. My mom's a schoolteacher here in Leon County in the public school system for over 33 years. She taught at Hartsfield, taught at Carroll-Movard, taught at Fort Braden, taught at Rod Middle School, and also Seeley. And I share that with people to let them know that I come from very humble poverty conditions. I grew up in a trailer park off of West Tennessee Street until I was 12 years old, and my dad and my mom found a way to work hard and to get us out, to get us out of that environment through hard work and sacrifice to us, where we moved over to the Astoria Park neighborhood where, you know, we lived for literally until my mom was moved into a memory care unit. And so I've got deep roots here, lifelong roots here. My professional career, I think, lends itself very, very well to this job. I've been the director for the John Scott Daley Florida Institute of Government FSU for over 16 years, but I've worked in the program for 28. Bottom line is, our institute works with local government, cities, counties, school districts, and special districts across the state of Florida, solving a range of issues, making recommendations to them, doing leadership development training for elected officials, charting out their vision for the next 10 to 20 years, not only charting out the vision, but also looking at how are we gonna pay for what we're planning to do and create. And so that's a very important aspect of who I am, my experience with local government, how we interact with state government, but also how those local governments interact with one another, be it city and county, be it county and school district, and so forth. So a lot of my experience professionally, I think, will be very useful on the county commission. One specific aspect for the last 11 years that I've been involved with at the Institute of Government is we built from scratch a 14 rural county economic development organization in north-central Florida. We do that under the auspices of the Institute of Government, and essentially what we've done is created, create an organization that works on behalf of those 14 counties to recruit business and industry to come into those communities. But what is really important about understanding rural communities and many aspects of Leon County as well is protecting that rural character with regard to the jobs and the targeted industries that match up well with those communities. In our own community, we will be looking at protecting, obviously, our neighborhood integrities and making sure that if we recruit business and industry or we work with existing businesses to expand or be retained, that we protect that neighborhood character that they, that's so treasured here. We have so many really distinct neighborhoods, both in geographically as well as socioeconomically. I'll just lay out to you my three key priorities. Many have been touched on in one way, shape, or fashion already, but the primary thing for me is going to be, you know, a focus on economic development and opportunity across our entire community. We have different segments of our county that have been left out of economic opportunity, and it's a variety of reasons of why, but at the end of the day, I want to be a champion of being targeted and intentional about driving our economic development and jobs into the southwest, northwest, and south side of town. There are ways to do that intentionally with blueprint money, but a big focus has to be on diversifying our economy. Many of our jobs in this community and for the foreseeable future will be built around government, will be built around the university system, around our nonprofits, as well as in healthcare. But there are a range of jobs that are projected over the next five to 10 to 15 years that are in the middle and high school trades areas, and we have to get back to looking at how those provide an entry level at a high-wage job and a career path for a number of people in our community that may be looking at that as a career. They're not just jobs, they're jobs that can get an industry certification in 12 to 18 months, have a great starting salary somewhere in the $22 to $25 an hour job with the opportunity in the future to be able to own a business and create jobs, and we have them all over our county in terms of those that started with electricians and plumbers and commercial driver licenses and electricians and welders. There's, the other part of that is with the middle and high school trade jobs are focused on white collar as well now with cybersecurity, medical coding, and so forth. These are jobs that pay good wages that often require only a high school diploma or equivalency to be able to get into these programs and be successful at that level. And so that's what I, that's one of the primary things that I want to do. Obviously, a huge focus as a second issue is public safety across our entire community. We have to be willing to get engaged, not just law enforcement with our community, but from neighbor to neighbor. We have to get outside our comfort zone and start building meaningful, trustful relationships, speak from the heart, and have tough conversations with our friends and those that we have a sphere of influence with, but we have to be engaged in getting involved in the challenges and the problems and concerns that are in a lot of these communities. This is not just law enforcement's job, it's our entire community, and so I want to be involved in ensuring that our public safety, wherever you live, whether you live north of Byton or south of Byton, that you feel safe in your community, you feel safe in your neighborhood. Lastly, and I mentioned it earlier, so I won't belittle the point, I really believe that we have to diversify this economy, and we can best do that through a focus and a refocus on middle and high school trades jobs and making sure that our kids from middle school to high school understand that this is a viable option. If we have children and youth and young adults that are capable and willing and able to go to college, by all means, they should pursue that dream that they have and graduate from college. There are others, in a number of cases, that either don't want to go to college, do not have the drive to go to college, or simply do maybe not have the resources to go to college. Middle and high school trades jobs and vocations are an excellent career path that can lead to that. I'll close by telling, I can speak to that because I grew up in it. My dad was an electrician, and he provided for our family, and he did very well, and he made, gave me and my brother an opportunity to do better in our life in terms of career paths, but I would stress that the high and middle skilled trades jobs are a viable career option for anybody that wants to pursue that in our community. Thank you. I think I'm well-suited for the county commission to bring that frame of mind in job recruitment, job expansion, and at the end of the day, the only way that we can create and lift people out of poverty and give them an opportunity for economic hope is to give them viable access to a high-wage and living job, and we can do that in Leon County.
Thanks, Jeff Hendry, and we wrap up our introductory, although we're about halfway through the program right now, with Kelly Adi. Kelly, it's all yours.
Hi, thanks, Paul. Thank you for this opportunity. It's really fun to see everybody at the same time. So my background is humble, but I'm gonna start with 25 years ago when I moved to Leon County. I took the job as the Executive Director of Refuge House, which is the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program here, and for the last 25 years, I have dug into this county with every possible fiber of my being. Two things that I think that I've accomplished really well, one is to provide incredible services. So in every place that I've worked, it's been directly related to the people of this county, whether it's through an issue like domestic violence or sexual assault, or through poverty, or working with the youth, the girls that I've been working with for the last nine years. I've been working directly with the people who need us the most, but the other thing that I think that I've done that I'm really, really proud of is that I am one of, I'm a problem solver, and so in the last 25 years, as I've identified gaps and I have an idea, or I'm part of a collective group of people that have an idea on how to resolve those issues or how to help, we've done some incredible work. We've, I've been involved, some of it I led, some of it I was part of the coalition that I brought together to get it done, but I tend to be very tenacious when I have an idea that I think is good and when I know that it has support from people. So examples of things that I've done- So examples of things that I've done here in Leon County that show that I have a track record of service and of implementing very successful and sustaining help for the community is everything from the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program at T M H, where we reduced the wait time for rape victims from seven hours to three hours from the time they arrived at the hospital to when they left. I was part of the group that started the United Partners for Human Services, which is a coalition of human service organizations. I was their first executive director. We gambled with $20,000 and have turned it into a 13-year organization. I started the Oasis Center for Women and Girls because there was a gap in this community for a general women's center to look at issues that face women and girls. That organization just celebrated its 12th anniversary, and it is also a sustaining and successful organization. I created the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and did that in partnership with the Kenech and Yemi and got to see firsthand what happens when you have a dynamite commissioner that sees an idea and a gap. He, I created it, he got it passed, all within like 30 days. That was pretty incredible. I was also part of the group that thought up and created the INI, which is the nonprofit resource center here in town. And we did it because there was no capacity building happening in the sector, and we needed some way to be able to do that. So I'm telling you all those things to say to the people who are listening, that I've been dug into this community for 25 years. Everything I've done has been to make this community better, and I've done that in a collaborative process. I know how to put people at the table who don't disagree, or do disagree with each other, and try to come to some kind of a consensus on how to move people forward. Most people in this community know me for that record, for that nonprofit record, but there's a lot more to me that I really want to make sure that people know. First of all, I think I'm the only candidate that has worked all in federal government, business, not only sole proprietor, but in manufacturing with Chris Craft Boats, and the nonprofit sector, so all three sectors. I have a strong background in criminal justice. My undergraduate degree is in criminal justice. I actually did my internship with the Clay County Sheriff's Department. So I rode with a deputy for an entire summer and had my eyes wide open to the realities of law enforcement. I taught criminal justice, introduction to criminal justice, at the University of North Florida before moving here. And then a few years after I moved here, Dr. Murdaugh, Dr. Jim Murdaugh, was the director of the Law Enforcement Academy, and he asked me to come and start teaching domestic violence classes to law enforcement officers. So I have a really strong understanding of the law enforcement sort of model from the inside. I'm a big believer in manufacturing. I spent three years working at Chris Craft Boats, and I worked in sales and marketing. And so my job was literally to put boats into production and then follow them through the line to completion. So I understand manufacturing. I also know that manufacturing pays better than most industries and that it is a way to get elevated pay up for people and to attract those kinds of businesses here super fast. I think we all agree on the main issues, so I'm, and I'm sure you want to ask some more about that, but my number one priority is collective impact to reduce poverty and crime, which to me go hand in hand. There's some differences, but it's a lot of similarities. As long as you have a shadow economy with people trying to survive in their community, you're going to have higher rates of crime. So we have to be able to address that, and it's going to take all of us. I do believe that law enforcement needs to be reformed. I said the same thing to the Police Benevolent Association when I met with them. They agree with me, and so do most law enforcement officers, that they have had to take on too much of the role of social work and providing and filling in for gaps rather than doing law enforcement. So we have to help them by taking that off of their plate. Those are also the areas where they get in the most trouble, and I think that we can help by taking that off of their plate. One thing that people haven't mentioned, Belle, though I'm sure that they really believe in this, is I watched my father die in the assisted, in the elder care system here in Leon County, and being tossed from assisted living facility to the hospital, to rehab hospitals, to a nursing home for nine months until he died in hospice. And interestingly enough, they had just told me he was going to have to leave because he wasn't sick enough. I couldn't get him into my house, there was no help for him. And my dad was a plumber, and he worked hard his whole entire life to take care of us kids, and it was unfair that at the end of his life, nobody took care of him. So we've got to do something about bringing affordable assisted living and nursing home. It's going to be a crisis. There are like 10 or 11 for-profit assisted living and nursing homes that charge a minimum of $3,500 a month to live in, and we're going to have to do something better for other people. And obviously, I'm interested in growth management, I'm very interested in transparency in the government process, and I have some really strong feelings about healthcare and things that we can do there. But those, I think I share that with a lot of people, but mostly I just want people to see, I've been right here for 25 years, dug into this community in every possible neighborhood, in every way possible. And that's the same thing I'm going to do as the county commissioner, is I'm going to dig in and try to find answers to some of these really big problems. So thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Kelly Adi. And those are the big six, the contenders for Leon County Commission, Board of County Commissioners at Large, Seat One. Reminder, some dates to keep in mind for the upcoming primary election in Leon County. The deadline for voter registration is July 20th. Early voting will start on August 3rd and continue through the 16th, and early voting locations are posted on the Supervisor of Elections website. Of course, there's been a big push here for vote by mail. You probably have already received a notice from a supervisor early along that line. Primary election day will be August 18th, and that's where these folks are going to be squaring off, and then the two top vote getters will go on to the general election in November, unless, of course, someone gets more than 50% of the vote, in which case, that's all she wrote. Let's go back to one of the big issues. I think you all have identified this as a, an overriding concern for everyone, and that is the incredible income disparity in Leon County, which impacts everything from affordable housing to inequities in law enforcement, a whole host of other situations. Let's quickly go around the board once again and talk about maybe the top three ideas that each one of you have to address that issue head-on, and we can get into some other things if time permits. Robin Colson, back to you. What's your top three when we're dealing with that, particularly, you know, the 04 zip code, these kinds of things?
My top three issues are, and have been since the day I filed, are number one, good manufacturing jobs for Leon County. Just, I just will say, laser focused on that. We have to have manufacturing jobs. Those are the jobs that not only pay a living wage, those are the jobs that pay healthcare benefits and retirement. I know whereof I speak. I was raised by blue collar workers in Indianapolis, which is a huge manufacturing in Union City. It is how people who only had less than high school educations, which were my parents and a lot of people who had high school educations, it's how they raise their families, and not only raise their families, send them to college, but enable them to buy a house, which is the, my second issue, which is affordable housing. You have to be able to own a home to build individual wealth. Any economist will tell you that. And when you own that home and you have a good job with retirement, then you, you can take care of yourself in your older age, which, which, as Kelly pointed out, is a huge issue for so many of us. My mother, right now, 91 years old, is in a rehab facility today. She's discharged tomorrow. All of her care is covered. I haven't had to worry a minute. She's a heart patient, but she worked 40, 40 years for a large pharmaceutical company in manufacturing, so did my father. They have those good benefits. They bought a home. They sent my brother and me to college. It's a three-pegged pathway out of poverty. It is manufact, good, good, solid manufacturing jobs. It is affordable housing. And the third peg is then access to healthcare, which you get through infrastructure development. And that's one of my key issues on the south and west sides, 32304. They don't have a grocery store right on the south side. How can that be? How can there be no good grocery store where you can buy healthy food? How can there not be any jobs? French Town Revitalization struggles, struggles greatly, and it's because they didn't put any jobs there. They didn't put any jobs. They put in services that people could buy, but if you don't have a job with disposable income, you can't buy those services. So then the service and retailers went out of business. It's, you have to have all of those pieces, and if you don't have at least one, if you don't have a good job, you don't have good healthcare, or you don't have affordable housing, it's hard to get the other two. It's really, really hard. So those things all have to come together. My last statement is, I harp on the manufacturing because we used to count on good public service jobs here in Tallahassee and Leon County. We were a government town. Those jobs have steadily, steadily declined, and this data comes from Department of Economic Opportunity. Those jobs have steadily declined for 30 years. You know the job sectors that have grown the fastest? Services and healthcare services on one end, which pay minimum wage, no benefits, no security, and on the other end, financial services and professional services. So we have the very lowest earning jobs growing quickly and the highest earning jobs growing quickly, and our middle class is disappearing. We have to replace those good public sector jobs. I think manufacturing jobs are the way to do it. There are 20,000 manufacturing companies in Florida. We don't have any in Tallahassee. We have what, 10, maybe if you count them? We need more. So those are my big three issues, and that's what I'll continue to focus on as a commissioner.
Thanks so much, Robin. Danielle, same, same idea there for that disparity. How do you address it? Let's see, turn, again, turn on your microphone, that helps.
Thank you for the question. I think that beyond anything, we need to make sure that people can afford the services that they need to survive. And so that includes good quality and affordable daycare facilities for people that have young children and need that level of assistance, as well as the job opportunities. You know, and job opportunities are not just about vocational jobs, and that is a very important area of investment that our community is already focused on, but it also includes jobs within the STEM arena. So being a scientist, I'm sort of partial to STEM careers, and not all STEM careers require college education. Our number one job need in Leon County is in nursing. I actually used to teach medical microbiology to nursing students in a training program. You know, you don't need to go to college to get a high-paying job, especially in areas that are very stimulating, such as medical and science. We're about to become on the scene for the largest magnetic capital of the world, and there are a lot of technical jobs that come in that arena, too. Green technology, you know, we've got a city that has committed to 100% renewable by 2035 for the, for the city operations and 2050 for the community at wide. And then our county has adopted an Integrative Sustainability Action Plan, yet we're still planning development projects that are based on an outdated comprehensive plan that are going to serve new communities while we have existing ones that are still struggling to have the types of Wi-Fi connection, sidewalks, lighting, adequate stormwater management, trying to get communities off of septic and onto sewer, while we still are permitting entirely new septic-oriented subdivisions within our community. So things are just a little bit backwards in terms of focusing on the new while disregarding the needs, or I wouldn't say disregarding, I'd say under prioritizing the needs of the existing community. So this directly relates to our urban services area and making sure that we're providing a good quality of life for people. But, you know, they can only enjoy a good quality of life if they have money to be able to afford the roof over their head and the food on their plate. I myself have suffered from housing insecurity and food insecurity throughout my life. Did my time on food stamps and ended up losing my housing a couple of different times, both during my teenage years and in my young professional years. So the ability to pay for the needs, not just for yourself, but, for example, for your children, too. I struggled as a single mom throughout my daughter's youth as a small business owner. And sure, I wanted the business to grow, but it was more important for me to be able to have enough money to pay for the mortgage and pay for good food. So jobs are of utmost importance, but there needs to be a broad array of different types of jobs that we're bringing, not just low-paying ones. In fact, our ALIS report, the Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed, so the Working Poor Report just came out in June and shows that of our 113,000 households in Leon County or so, 49% of them fall below that ALIS threshold. That includes the 20% of impoverished households in Leon. So we've had a decrease in the level of poverty within Leon County, but an increase in the amount of people falling under that ALIS threshold. That, to me, says that we've got a lot of low-paying jobs, we need those medium and high-paying jobs. And I think that everyone at the table here brings some of that, that knowledge base and experience to bring workforce training for not just those that are not bound for college, but the ones that are and the ones in between that just need additional training and support. But connected to that, in my opinion, is entrepreneurism and making sure that we're supporting people who are looking for that outside-the-box approach. This works particularly well when you need flexibility of schedule. And in fact, I did that as a single mom specifically to try and get that flexible schedule. But you have to have the support programs that are targeting that. Dome Station is a wonderful example of some of that network. But meanwhile, we've got disparity in the amount of money that's coming from our county, our city, and Blueprint in public contracts going to these minority-owned and women-owned small businesses. So there needs to be more data-driven, targeted outreach to make sure we've got those companies here to utilize and that they're being fairly utilized as well. We've got a lot of work to do. O E V has done their part so far this year, in fact, in combining all of the certification programs under the county, the city, and Blueprint. So it's one process for small businesses to be able to get their foot in the door, one process to go through to fill out that certification, but it can't stop there. We need to implement it, and we need to make sure that we're nurturing those businesses. I think that that's really important in supporting the financial health of all zip codes, including the ones that need it most.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Scott Flowers, your thoughts on that?
I'm trying to remember to unmute. I was, I was holding that the whole time, I want to make sure I did. First of all, I want to, I want to say something. I typically don't say anything negative about anybody who's trying to do good things in our community, and I, and certainly not anything negative toward what Danielle said, but I want to kind of highlight this as, as something that missed the mark, and that is the Dome Station. I would disagree that, that they are helping entrepreneurs and helping small businesses. I myself went to the Dome Station to try to get some help, and I was unable to get help there. And I'm a pretty educated guy, I also have a science background. My degree is in physics with minors in chemistry and math. It was, I call it chemical engineering light. I did three and a half years in the chemical engineering program, and then I got divorced and had to just take whatever classes I could get while I was working. So, so I ended up with kind of an odd hybrid degree, but, but my background is engineering. And so, and it's funny that that came up because I was talking with somebody earlier this morning about a project on the, in the French Town Revitalization area where we're trying to bring in this SOMO development, the South Monroe Street mural development, and it's going to be more of the same. It's going to be more restaurants and more bars and more arts, and it's a beautiful, wonderful project that we don't need right now. It's a project that's not going to create the right kind of job, it's a project that, that our community doesn't need to sink $850,000 into this project so that some big, out of our community developers can pocket millions of dollars on $14 a square foot retail space. That's not what we need, we need manufacturing. So about 15 years ago, I'm, my background is entrepreneurship. I grew up that way, my family, you know, everybody has kind of mentioned their families, and my dad was always an entrepreneur. When I graduated from high school, I didn't go straight to college. I had scholarship opportunities, but I went and opened a gas station, a Sinclair gas station, convenience store. At 18 years old, I had my first business, didn't do very well. 18-year-old might not be the right time to start your own business, maybe I needed a little more experience first, but, but over the years, I've had several types of businesses. At one point, we actually created a manufacturing facility here in Tallahassee. It was called S and T Specialty Stone Construction. We were making synthetic stone. A partner of mine, a good friend who played football at Florida State, had, got his master's degree. We went into business together, we started manufacturing this stone on the south side, and unfortunately, he got cancer and ended up dying at, at the age of 30. So from him, from 26 to 30, his time was dedicated to, to trying to get his health right, so we closed that business. But, but I've created jobs. It's, it's, it's something that we all talk about, and it's something we all know is important, but it's a little more difficult to do than it is to talk about. It's, it's easy to talk about entrepreneurship right now, and I own Gee Willie's Uniforms, and I own Sprinkles Paradise Streets, and I own LifeBuoy Business Consulting Solutions where we coach businesses. So I talk to business owners a lot, and I've got several clients here in town that run small businesses that, you know, we've kind of taken through hard times and gotten them to be more successful. And it's something that we all know that we need, but how do we accomplish it? How do we get somebody to bring manufacturing? And it's something that we all know that we need, but how do we accomplish it? How do we get somebody to bring manufacturing? How do we convince a entrepreneur that instead of opening a restaurant, maybe they should try to produce something? How do we get them in touch with the right people and help them navigate the complicated licensing and regulation and corporate and taxes and all of these types of things? It has to be done and there are ways to do it. And there are people who are trying to do it, you know? We've got the Jim Moran Institute does a pretty good job. The Dome Station is over there and they're well meaning, but I don't think they're doing a very good job at this time. But there are some resources that are out there and I think our county can address these issues by creating real help. I maybe, maybe it's dedicating a little bit of staff to grant writing. Maybe it's dedicating a little bit of staff to managing a webpage that has all of the resources that are available within the community. Maybe it's somebody that, you know, one thing just this week that was brought to my attention was that it's easier to get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant than it is to get a ten thousand dollar grant. So, you know, if you've got the right people in the right places that can coach our young entrepreneurs in this city. If we've got the right people that can walk them and help them navigate through, you know, the troubled waters that it takes to be an entrepreneur. What I see a lot of my coaching business is entrepreneurs get started and they hit the ground running. And sometimes success is just as dangerous as failure. They start doing really good and next thing you know, they're behind on paying their sales tax. They're behind on filing their corporate reports. They're, they're behind on filing their, their federal withholding taxes because they hit the ground running and they had some success because they were passionate and they had a good idea and they wanted to do good things in the community. And then nobody really coached them on everything that entails. And it shouldn't take a college degree. It should take, you know, it should take just a little bit of, of getting their feet wet, finding the right mentorship, reaching out to the right resources that already exist in our community. And early when Robin introduced herself and talked about facilitating, I got excited because that's exactly what, what I do. And that's exactly what I think our community needs. We, all of these resources exist out there now. And constantly we have our community leadership trying to reinvent the wheel. We have the CRA and we have blueprint. And we have them trying to do everything themselves rather than reaching out to these existing organizations and putting the right resources into the right places so that our community can thrive and prosper. Instead, they want to start over. They want to reinvent the wheel and make everything their own idea. And, you know, there's a quote that's been going around a lot lately. It's lately, it's amazing what we can do when, when you don't care who gets the credit. I think there's a lot of great things happening in the community, but I don't think our community leadership is really embracing those things the way that it should be. So that would be my role as a commissioner would be getting the commission on board with the resources that exist in our community. So that, so that somebody straight out of high school, somebody who just lost a job, somebody that got laid off from one of the many restaurants that have closed lately. You know, they've had all these good ideas all these years, but they had a comfortable income. And now is the time where necessity is the mother of innovation. So all of a sudden, now they've got an opportunity and a need to go do something. And our community should be ready to help them do that, support them to go and fill that need and support them to go fulfill their dream. And that's how we build our community. We build it from within. We build it by putting the resources that exist into the right places to help the community that exists. So that's what I would focus on is being that facilitator.
Thank you, Scott. Moving along here, folks, just a few minutes remaining here. Carolyn Cummings, you're up next on the disparity situation. You have to take it off mute there, Carolyn. You're still on mute. There we go.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
My concern covers a wide range of disparities. Disparity in education, opportunity disparity in healthcare disparity in housing. And I believe the powers that be in Leon County, we have got to look at what's happening in our beautiful county. There is no reason why, just because you live in a certain zip code, that there should be a disparity in the education or the quality of education that you receive. There should be no reason why there should be a disparity in income just because you live in a certain income area. Now, I recognize that there are disparities and I think we can all agree from the South Side, between the South Side and the Northeast Side. But what we have to do is to stop talking about it and take some action. Now, I recognize that the Leon County Commission now, the sitting commissioners, have tried to address recently the disparities as far as healthcare is concerned. And we have to recognize as citizens that that has a long range effect. If we have children that are not receiving the proper healthcare, their health conditions will escalate into adulthood. And we see the coronavirus pandemic right now having an adverse effect on those in our community who do not have access to healthcare. Haven't had access for a while to continuing healthcare. We need to rectify those situations. And I believe that the studies that are being conducted now that have been directed by the Leon County Commission is only the first step. We have got to do more. We have to engage the entire community and not just the elected officials. We have to engage, and I think Scott Flowers mentioned it, we have to engage all segments of the community, the working community, the business community. We all have to buy into, number one, the notion that there is a problem. And number two, that there shouldn't be such a problem in inequities here in the twenty-first century. And then, once we recognize that there is a problem, then we need to try to have viable solutions, solutions that are achievable. Not just phantom solutions, but solutions that are achievable. Those individuals who have children who are not receiving proper healthcare, they don't rest at night. They are concerned about their children and concerned about themselves as well. That segment of the population might not have transportation to even get to the hospital or get to any type clinic in their neighborhood. That needs to be addressed. There needs to be more accessibility for those individuals on the low socioeconomic total pole, so to speak. Right up there with my concern about disparities, I'm also concerned about criminal justice reform. And I think at this day and time in our country, right here in Tallahassee, we have the real opportunity to come together and make a change. We see the outbursts and outcries throughout this country. And especially when this week, my home state of Mississippi, the legislature addressed vestiges of racism and discrimination by removing a portion of the flag that, that really was an outrage to a lot of the citizens there. If Mississippi can do it, I think we in Tallahassee can address some of those inequities as far as how individuals are treated. Now, I know the, the subject of police reform has come up. And I think we as citizens in Leon County need to address it. We might not call it police reform, but it is real. It is real when you are a mother of a black son like I am. And we, when you are also the auntie and the grandmother of black children. It is a disparity on how our children are treated by the police. We have good police here in Tallahassee. I think the majority of them want to take care of our citizens. We are all concerned about law and order in Tallahassee. But we cannot sweep that disparity on how minorities are treated under the rug. So I think we need to, we need to have a holistic approach. As a commissioner, I will have a holistic approach to all the disparities. And perhaps I'm a little biased because I see it more closely than most of you do. But it has to be addressed. And I think in order for Tallahassee to be the viable, great city that I have always advocated that it is, we have to address all the underlying systemic issues that tend to bring us down and tend to allow certain citizens to feel that they are not part of the populace. We have to be concerned about every, everybody, the, the middle class, the high class, the less affluent. And I think the sheriff has a slogan, we're all in. So I think it's important that we bring to the Leon County Commission a holistic approach to our city, a holistic approach to our county. And part of that, of course, is job creation. Part of that is recognizing that some parts of the population feel that they are not college material. But there should be a place in society for them. So let's bring industry in. Let's, as a governmental entity, give incentives to industry. Provide incentives to developers so that they can buy in, so that everybody is able to have a piece of the American pie. You know, we're coming up to the Fourth of July. We are celebrating independence. And independence should be celebrated by all citizens and not just some segments of the population. So let's move, remove, let's address and remove all those vestiges that causes even one citizen to feel that they are devalued. And let's bring everything to the table so that all citizens will feel that they are all in. All citizens will feel that they are being considered, that they are part of the society, that they are part of this great county of Leon County. And let's remove a lot of those. And I won't get into the specific instances of vestiges where we have seen police brutality throughout the nation. We haven't seen all of that here, but let's address it so that it won't fester here, so that it won't grow here. And so that our citizens will realize that we are concerned about everybody.
Thank you, Carolyn. We want to make sure we can be concerned about the other two candidates who still need to get their comments in on that one. Jeff Endry, you're up first.
Thanks, Tom. And I'm going to refer back to your, I think this question was focused on looking at the, the three things to kind of address income inequality and disparity. And I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues. But I think the biggest foundation and biggest equalizer that we can have in terms of being able to pursue a successful career is equal access to an excellent education. And that doesn't just start when you go to kindergarten. It starts from zero to five ages of age. I'm a big proponent of the Children's Services Council. I will tell you that it's the greatest investment that we can make in this community is in our next generations of children. You know, anywhere from eighty-five to ninety percent of a person's brain is cognitively developed before the age of four or five. And so it makes sense to be investing in that early intervention in terms of leveling the playing field for their, their ability to be successful. I'll also share with you that the highest correlation to somebody's gainful employment over the course of their life is how well they do at third grade reading. That's been very well documented, but the bottom line is we have got to ensure that the kids that are going into kindergarten are prepared to go into kindergarten and therefore they're elevating themselves to be able to reach those metrics and standards at the third grade reading and progress after that. So I think education has to be one of our foundational aspects. The other thing, when we look at our, our young adults as well as our youth, as well as adults looking for a second education, a second career. Competitive workforce is the number one factor when a business is looking to relocate to a, to a community. It used to be infrastructure, available land, affordability of land. Those things are all still very important. But the number one factor, when a CEO is sitting across the table making a decision about whether they want to move their company to your community and create living wage and high wage jobs is the competitiveness of that workforce talent. And we have to be laser focused on doing that. We have to be laser focused on providing those opportunities across the entire community. And I get back to my middle and high school trades jobs. That's not the panacea for everything, but it provides such an avenue for anybody in this community to be able to, to have a long dignified work experience. It's not just a job, but one that can turn into a career and in many cases can turn into business ownership where they're employing other people. Thirdly, again, what those lead to is a living in high wage jobs. That's going to enable every community and every segment of our community to create economic stability for their families. At the end of the day, I'm so concerned because I grew up in it. I grew up in the three-two-three-oh-four area code. I grew up in the three-two-three-oh-three area code. I know through my parents what it takes to get out of those environments. Or better yet, build a holistic society and keep living where you are and build a great environment where you are. But what it takes is a sticktuitiveness, access to those kinds of middle and high school trade jobs. Having an example to follow, to be able to know what it takes to, to provide for your family and take care of your family and have that come in and do that generation of generation. I'll share two other quick points with you, Tom. A lot of folks on and our colleagues have done a lot of great work in this community. I will share with you with regard to job creation, the North Florida Economic Development Partnership, which I've built from scratch that we led over time, has created over fourteen hundred jobs over the last eight years in fourteen rural communities. Eighty to eighty-five percent of those are in the manufacturing industry. So I know what it takes to sit down with a CEO to, to share with them the assets and the infrastructure that's available. And not only that, if there's infrastructure that is missing, if there's workforce that is missing to be able to sustain that pipeline over the course of time to support his business, we have also attracted over two hundred and sixty-five million dollars in this region in private capital investment. That's not government investment. That's private capital investment into that region. And finally, I would end with, from a, from a state and federal grant, infrastructure and workforce development training, we've been able to secure nearly a hundred and twenty million dollars over the course of the last eight years to build that competitive workforce, to build infrastructure, whether that's water and sewer capacity, utilities, roads and expansion and access roads and preparing sites, which is ever so critical. One of the things that we have lost track of here in Leon County, in my view, and a lot of our colleagues have talked about manufacturing, and they're exactly right. There's also another avenue for this community, two other industries to look at, logistics and distribution. When you look at our access to the interstate system, to the rail access and assets that we have, and also the airport, logistics and distribution is a great opportunity for our community. And I would also look at aviation. We, you know, I know our airport gets lifted up as a joke at times around how, how struggling it is with regard to ridership. I'm more focused on what kind of economic development we can do around aviation. That has the highest trajectory of job creation over the next five to 10 years is in the aviation industry. And so we need to be focused on looking at that airport, looking out and compliment anything. I'll close with this, Tom. You know, people ask me, how are we going to do this, Jeff? How are we going to create this environment where we can recruit business and industry? It's not our government or our local government's job to create the jobs. It's to create the certainty of decision making and also create the environment that is attractive, balanced, by the way, against our neighborhoods and our sensitive environmental natural assets, which gives us a built-in competitive advantage. People want to live here. We're evidence of that. We've either moved here, we've grown up here all our life. It's a beautiful, wonderful community and we have to maintain that. We also have to be just as dogged about creating an environment where business wants to come here and pay highways jobs. And the way we do that, and the way we reach into every single community and segment of our community, we do it one child, one family and one home at a time. That's the only way I've ever known how to do business is looking people in the eyes, giving them and speaking from my heart, getting that trust and ensuring that we take care of every single family in this community. I thank you for the ability to be here.
Okay, thank you so much, Jeff. And we wind up with Kelly Adi.
Yeah, I think there's a benefit and a curse to being last, but, and I feel sorry for you, Tom, because I think you're up to twelve minutes of editing that you're going to have to do. So I'll try to be super succinct. So for me, income disparity really comes down to systemic issues. Everything else is just the way you're trying to address them. And the number one thing that we have to talk about in this community is racism. It is the number one thing. It is driving so much of the disparity in every single area that people have addressed. And so we have to be able to figure out how to have a real conversation about that. The other really big thing for me is that we need to talk less about income disparity and more about wealth disparity. Because income disparity only takes you so far and wealth disparity actually helps generations of people coming after you. And we know that the people who lead in our community and lead in the nation, most of them have come from inherited wealth. And so we really need to look at how do we help people gain wealth? The fastest growing entrepreneurial area population here in Leon County are black women and we're not hearing about it. And so I think that's tied to the racism conversation. But I think if everybody would get behind these women who are trying to do extraordinary things, that we can have a pretty significant impact, especially with populations where their income may not be up to where it should be. I absolutely agree with the trades. I think we have to have trades. I also think we need to promote it equitably and also identify girls as being more than capable of working in the trades. The thing nobody wants to talk about is fair wages. And the reality is that for 25 years, I've been watching what happens when you underpay people. So it's fascinating to me. One of the girls at Pace just graduated a year ago and she jumped at a job at Walmart for $11 an hour because she was so taken with the fact that she could make $11 an hour for 30 hours a week so they didn't have to pay her healthcare. And so where is she getting her healthcare? She's getting it from Bond Community, which is funded by tax dollars to help the people that are uninsured. So I really think we need to have a very real conversation with the chamber and the business community and educate them on how they're contributing to income disparity by underpaying people and not giving them enough benefits. And so I was the very first PACE center out of 22 centers in the state that raised the minimum wage in my center to $15 an hour. So you can't work at PACE Leon and make less than $15 an hour. And I feel good about that. But I also know from the research that we did on the Commission of Status of Women and Girls, that a living wage in this county is actually $22 an hour and that the vast majority of people are living in poverty, both in the Alice population and in the poverty, in the poverty sector are single moms with children. So we have to figure out a way to help them, how to help them get ahead to where they need to be. And last but not least, attach the race thing, which I really want to talk about is the, what happens when you have a racist community? When you have a community where racism is allowed to make decisions on who has money, who doesn't, who has access, who doesn't? And I'm just saying that's just a Leon County phenomenon. That's a worldwide phenomenon, but it results in over policing. And what happens when you over police the community is that more of them are arrested, more of them are incarcerated and more of them have criminal charges, which means that you've pulled them out of the community and made them so they cannot get equitable jobs and that they, they end up turning towards the shadow economy in order to feed their families. So we, we have to have really honest conversations about this, not around the edges. We can't have people being, uh, marching in the streets and everybody remaining silent, like just waiting for it to pass, not wanting to say a word. Cause if you wade in, then somehow you're not going to be saying the right thing. My two cents are you wade in with what you know is the truth. And the truth is that we can do better and we should do better. And when we do, it will change lots of the division in the community, including income and every other place where there's disparity. So thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Kelly Adi. Also thanks to Jeff Henry, Carolyn Cummings, Scott Flowers, Danielle Irwin and Robin Coulson, the contenders for Leon County Board of County Commissioners at Large, Seat One. Some great decisions facing voters in our county. Coming up in the primary election on the 18th of August. Thank you all for being part of it. Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. Thanks going to Taylor Cox, Paul Damm, Amy Diaz de la Vegas, Tricia Moynihan and Lydo Rawls. Kim Kelling also, and I'm Tom Flandigan. Next week, Political Perspectives tackles the Tallahassee City Commission, Seat One Contest. We'll join you back here then, right here on Perspectives.